Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Regular meeting, Commissioners' Court, Liberty County, Texas, February 9th, 2021. Can y'all believe we're already in February? Yes, we are. We have a form established. Let the record show that Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Corvasky are here in court this morning. Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Whitmire, or by way of Zoom. So we do have a full court and we have business for the court this morning. So we would, as all rise, Ms. Chambers will lead us in the pledge, the flags, and Mr. Bush will lead.
Please face the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Please face the Texas flag. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Father, we come to you this morning from another section of Commissioners' Court in a year that's quickly passing by. We ask that you continue to give this court grace and wisdom, Father, as it does the people's business. We ask that you protect and keep our first responders, all of them, Father, and be with our communities as we work together. And so we, obviously, Father, need to continue to work together for the benefit of our people. Be with us in all these things, in Jesus' mighty name, amen.
Amen.
Out of four, purposes of proclamations, what we do have a proclamation this morning. Anything that serves a person. And John Hebert Sr., although we lost him just a few months back, but there was not a day that I didn't get a call from John or else call from him that I didn't feel, when I got off the phone, it just made you happy. It can be the worst thing you've ever had, but when you hung up the phone, it was like it was the best thing that ever happened. So let's, let's add proclamation while the family up here with us. I guess we can do that, we got enough room. I see we got a pretty good group of the family here this morning. Judge is here. John's here. Well, we'll kind of get over this way where I can watch y'all a little closer. Proclamation, declaring January 15th is a day of giving in memory of John J. Hebert Sr. Whereas we come together, remember and honor a local legend and a kid, a local businessman for over sixty years. John was a natural leader and spent his life in service to others. Whereas, as it is fitting and proper to celebrate John's tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and commitment to service to Liberty County. Whereas John was an humble man, he didn't speak much of his accomplishments to this area, although there were many, including but not limited to former president, Liberty Day Gary Chamber, Liberty Day and Chamber Citizen of the Year in 1989, Masonic Logic Community Builder Award Volunteer of the Year for the Texas Council on Child Welfare Boards, Liberty County or Liberty Rotary Club Committee Service Award in 1980, Member of Lions Club since 1972, Lighter of the Year in 1980, Past President of Liberty Lions Club, Melvin Jones Fellow in 1992, Texas Lions Founder Fellow, past Grand Knight with the Knights of Columbus, Commissioner for the Port of Liberty. Have fun working with him on that. Actually got to ride the boat with him one day. Some of y'all can't say that. Texas Workforce Commission, Gulf Coast Workforce Development Board, HGAC Aircode Board, Liberty County CPS Treasurer Board of Directors, Regent Hagan Children's Act Board of Directors and Friends of Scouting, Boy Scouts of America. He was also a lifetime member of the Baptist Conception Church of Liberty. Whereas John loved working hard, helping others, and being back to his community. John Hebert's children, John Jager, Stephen, Donna, are setting a present, a day of giving. Every January 15th, which is John's birthday, the siblings will give to others from their dead. They're also asking everyone who knew John Hebert Sr. to give something on this anniversary date. It could be your time, your talents, money, help to a struggling family, help to the homeless, or even just doing something that uplifts someone less down like John's. Now therefore being resolved, the Commissioners' Court of Liberty County, Texas, is hereby proclaim the 15th of January of Liberty County, Texas, as a day of giving and encourage all citizens to join together, to give back to the community in any way that is personally and sign this night, February 2021, by myself, Commissioners, and as John would say, have a happy day. And he always did, we always, we thank y'all for sharing John with us. And of course, we miss him, I miss getting the chance to visit with him because it was always words of wisdom. I mean, I'm sure that you, y'all, kids especially, had the opportunity to sit there and get the words of wisdom from him, and they're always good. It's almost like talking to my dad, the closest thing I can think of anyway. But thank y'all so much, and thank John.
One and all, thank you.
Get there and give a picture of that, buddy. Yes, sir. You bet. Appreciate you, sir. Yes, y'all, you bet. Let's see, number five. Public comment. Six point zero is the consent agenda. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the items on the consent agenda? If you have any questions, can you bring them forward?
Somebody has to change. Somebody has to change.
Dwayne?
No, not Dwayne. It's Constable Precedent Six. The document says master certificate and this is a factor of intermediate certificates. So you can change where the master certificate is. It's a dollar now. Under payroll changes. Or. Yes, so it should read intermediate.
I do have a last minute addition to add. I sent you an email, Lee. It's a reimbursement to Nick Dennis for $211.08. It was for a file server from the District Attorney's Office.
Kim, you have anything?
I don't.
Considered and approved on the two additions mentioned. We have a motion. Dr. Dig.
Second.
Got a second.
Hey, is Ms. Kim here?
Yes.
Do you have any additions?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Got a motion to second to approve the consent agenda with the items mentioned in addition. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Six point seven. Seven point zero. It's tough when you don't have your glasses on. Seven point zero is regular agenda. Seven point one, a sooner approved amendment, number four, to base contract for arts architecture LLC with the county court of law number two for a fixed sum of forty-six thousand seven fifty. I'm going to ask that y'all table this today until we work out the contractual items. Move to the table.
Second.
Got a motion from Greg. Second, Leon, table. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Seven point two, Ms. God has a considered and approved of one-year maintenance contract for Tyler Technologies for various parts of the public safety software. Why you, you want to describe this to me or you want to get?
Yeah, this is a one-year maintenance contract for public safety modules in the Tyler software. It's one year, it starts March the first and ends February of 2022, and it's $71,759.67.
Any discussion?
Make the motion with approval.
Got a motion, Leon, second, Greg, to approve, all favor say aye. Likewise, next. Motion does carry now. So thank you, gentlemen. Here's a good one. Seven point three, Liberty County Child Welfare Board, consider and approve the appointment of the newest board member, Ms. Connie Jordan. And Connie, you here today? There you are. And I see some of the board members. And thank y'all, Connie, thank you so much for stepping up. Appreciate your service. I know you'd be a five-board member. Thank you so much. Amendment with approval. Second. Greg. Second, Bruce to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. That motion carries now. Y'all come on up here, let's get a picture of you newest members. While we got trapped in the court, we have a lot more to do.
I will not stand by women's laws.
It's not the first time everybody's ever said anything.
Well, then you're too far. Yeah, you know, you actually could stand in front of the staff. Okay, there you go. Do we have our mask on or? Yes.
Thank you all so much.
Thanks, Jenny. Thank you, Jennifer.
Seven point four, Constable Partners, Precedent Six, considering and pushing changing part-time deputy position to a full-time position in addition of a $1,000 increase for uniforms and a $1,000 increase in fuel. Also included in the packet is requests for two bicycles and bicycle-related equipment uniforms in order to begin a bicycle patrol in Precedent Six. That's pretty unique. I probably need to go back and roll the pressing.
Dwayne? How are you looking on this and are these figures correct?
Oh, I'll, is this going to be a hundred percent reimbursed by Colony Ridge? That's my first question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Jay.
It is going to be a hundred percent reimbursement from Colony Ridge.
Okay.
Okay, we'll need to do a budget amendment and get some exact figures. And if Mr. Harness will get with my office, we'll do that and we can have it on the next Commissioners' Court. Then we'll, of course, make an inter-local agreement also.
I'll be happy to draft that for you and we'll get it going. As soon as we get the final figures, we've had similar contracts in the past. It won't take long at all.
Zach, if you'll just get with us, we'll do a budget amendment and put it on the next court.
There is a correction on that. It's also addition of one part-time deputy and a total of four bicycles.
Okay. All right, well, if you call or come by the office sometime, we'll get it on the next court for you.
Okay. Make a motion to table.
Second.
Got a motion, Bruce, to table. Yeah, made a second. We'll revisit that at the next meeting, all favor say aye. Thanks. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven point five, Elections Administrator, Mr. Bush, Senator, approving a local agreement for Liberty County Elections Administrator's Office and Liberty ISB for election-related digital media services projects. Clint, you want to come up and explain this to us?
Yes, sir.
All of us, ones that are not millennials, will understand exactly what we're doing.
The monies that fund this inter-local agreements project is Facebook, Ramon. Very excited about this project, work with Liberty ISB and their technology department, pretty much to work with us to do judge training videos, YouTube videos, and Facebook videos, elections in this county. We have to use Facebook a whole lot to communicate with constituents. I don't have the expertise to do videos and things like that, even though I am a young juror, but I'm not that age, and they will help us do all of that. I've been working with the Auditor's Office extensively on this. They've had to rein in some of my energies. I work a little too quick for government work. Really excited about, no, you don't. I'm excited about this opportunity to work with those kiddos. We're proposing, still working with the Auditor's Office, to purchase some equipment, video equipment. We will keep that in the county and at my office. They will come over and show us how to use it and help us do things like that. This is the whole of play, first agreement with the department. School district is willing to do anything they need to do to work with us on this, and I ask them for approval, at least do the inter-local agreements. I'm excited to show y'all things of the future, and y'all can also have access to this technology once we get the right model of the ground. Matthew has taken a look at this contract as well.
So they would be able to produce videos that you put up.
When you were doing your COVID videos, we'll have some lighting and some of our good cameras, not as shaky. They will be able to help us with media presentations. Okay.
All right, any questions?
Yeah, Clint, we're not paying the school district for their services. More or less, all we're doing is saying, hey, y'all can use this equipment and, you know, in your educational projects, you'll show us how to use it. We're not paying them, is that correct?
This part is, we're buying the technology, housing it in our offices, and they will come over and help us. They do, they are having some advertising packages, they're still setting up a lot of things. We may actually pay them in the future for editing. We're going to be buying some of their services as well, but that's for a future conversation. But basically, we'll be doing most of the shooting in our office, but for editing stuff, we don't, we do not want to spend the money to buy editing software and all that. That is something we just would not use. We may pay them to do that, but the school district as a regular vendor. But that, we can talk about that.
That's a separate agreement, more or less.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay.
Giving them, I guess, authorization for them to come touch county equipment. Taxpayer, well, it's grant equipment, but to come and use counties' equipment at our offices.
Yeah. I don't see a problem with this. There were some questions I'd gotten with the Auditor's Office, and we had some questions about how this might impact the grant. But I don't believe at this point that it's, that this agreement, you know, poses any risk to that.
Sure, they actually sent me a letter endorsing this. They don't even care if we was to give them our grants, sub-grant the monies. They are excited about this as well.
Matthew?
About that.
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes, Leon.
Do you feel this needs a little more research?
I'm concerned about the grant aspect. If we start, you know, using grant money to pay, I just want to make sure all of that fleshes out. But merely allowing them to come use the equipment on our premises for election-related videos, I'm not concerned about that. Because that accomplishes the purpose of the grant. But once we start, you know, using the money in different ways or, you know, letting them have the equipment outside our property, that's where I might want to really drill down into the grant language and make sure we're comfortable.
Let me ask you this, Matthew. Do you think we need to go ahead and take no action on this today and let you do a little more research on this?
Yeah, I might feel a little bit more comfortable if we go ahead and discuss some of the end goals and make sure we have a comprehensive agreement that complies with the grant, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Not to rain on your parade, Clint.
All right, it's all good, it's coming to work.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm going to make the motion when we take no action on this today and let Matthew do his additional research, and then we'll bring it back to Commissioners' Court and get something done with it.
Let me, Leon, you want to table this or just take no action?
I'm sorry?
Want to table this or take no action?
Let's table it for today. And we'll.
I'm sure we'll get this sorted out by next time.
All right, we have a motion to table. Second. Second, motion Leon, second, Bruce to the table. Commissioners' Court meeting, all favor say aye. Likewise, next. That motion carries now. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven point six, Mr. Hooker Miller Fire Marshal's, consider and approve order authorizing retail fireworks permit holders to sell fireworks to the public in celebration of Texas Penney's Jack.
Judge, according to state statute, we have to put this on the agenda for before the 15th.
Once again, would it be in anticipation of any drought conditions or? Matthew, do we have to also have that included in the motion or not?
Not looked at it in a while, but my memory is that you have to authorize it, and then if drought conditions, you know, come about, then you can enter in an order forbidding, you know, setting off the fireworks, et cetera.
Correct.
Any discussion? Motion to approve.
Got it.
Bruce to approve, second, Leon. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven, Ms. Burman, consider and approve the updated forms for badges for current or for county employees and attorneys and necessary court personnel for identification purposes at courthouse entrance. And she's been busy getting everybody their cards to get in, all the, all the things that she needed to get rolling pretty good. Jennifer, how's it going?
It's going really well, but we're actually on quarantine this week. Our kids have COVID.
Oh, they doing okay?
They're doing fine, so hopefully we don't get it. But we reworked these forms. I made them where they're fillable PDF forms, so department heads can type the information in. I think that we were having some problems reading. Some of us have terrible handwriting, and so we made it to where, you know, there's a little bit more information on the forms that's necessary, and so, you know, they're authorized and signed and legible.
All this can be incorporated into the badge machines that we have down at the victim's office?
That's my understanding. I think there's still some issues, or there were last week with the badge machine, but I believe that those are getting worked out so we can start issuing cards again.
Yes, that's right. The badge machine is up and running now. To do, and we have data logs come out and reinstall. So it finally got fixed and we have it up and running. So we were just waiting for the court's approval on these two forms today so that we can start printing badges. What's the timeline on this? When do we have to do this, Greg?
I would think as soon as possible, to answer them.
As soon as possible. So we'll be requesting new forms, these new forms for all of the employees who currently hold badges, and so that, you know, all of that is updated. So the sooner the better, but the badges that are currently out will continue to work. And so just as soon as we get the forms in and the new people, then we'll get those printed out.
All right, any further discussion? Entertaining motion.
Make a motion with approval.
Motion, Leon, approve, second, Greg. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. That motion carries now. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Seven point eight, Mr. Seame, glad to see him over. Can you see the non-COVID corner in there?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Seame was this hard to please, but Stephanie searched around through several vehicles and found out one of these specs. He has 40,000 legislative and legislative car vehicles, so let's just.
Okay. Make a motion to approve. Make a motion to approve. Motion for Bruce, second, Greg to approve the purchase of vehicle to buy boarding down to $3,233, Caldwell County, County Chevrolet three hundred and twenty. All of the members say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That was my.
Question right off. Where's the medical?
Yeah. Engineered.
Well, that's a solid, thank you, young man, from the middle of the car herd.
All right. Uh, number seven point nine permits inspections. Mr. Douglas, consider to approve the final plan for Santa Fe subdivision section nine A.
Yes, sir. This is, uh, another installment in Santa Fe trilogy. And, uh, it has been reviewed by LJA. Contained within your packing is the approval letter from LJA. They have complied with our requirements for road construction, drainage, lot sizes, all of the things that go into complying with our subdivision regulations. So we're gonna ask you today to approve the final plan for Santa Fe section nine.
Discussion. Approve, second. Motion for Greg, second, first to approve. All of the members say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Mr. Harrison, see you back here. I got a question for you. Is this the new section where D.R. Horton is building homes up here or is this?
No, so nine A is, uh, not me, one of those before D.R. built it, so. Nine A is town up against the volume, ten is where the two whole schools are.
Okay. And the new homes that are built out there?
Yes, Jake.
Yeah.
Uh, ask, ask Mr. Harris to step up. I can't, I can't understand him.
Yeah, the, uh, I was happy to hear Sunday morning, Sheriff Service, uh, at your meeting. Anyway, I just go through what's written. It's some of the new reparts that were there. So fortunately, some of these figures weren't including some of the previous stock operations. Those, uh, those are all sticks. I think some are very hot, but, uh, who, who is the, those builder of those?
So you got Camden is, is building houses, um, D.R. Horton, First American, and Morrison's.
Okay.
There's a lot of builder interest right now with the, with that, uh, the grand part way coming in and this Texas economy dealing with it. So there are people from all over the country moving to Texas. And so we're just, we're seeing that and the extra side diagram we're getting out of it.
So now this, this new section of this nine A, if we were discussing the school location, if there's two schools that are in this area, so there's, there's, we have one school open, one under construction, and two more that are gonna start, they'll start in section ten. Section two, okay, yeah. Okay. So Cottonwood is going there. Have they named the other schools yet?
I don't think so. Um, and then along with the two that are, that are, they're starting now, um, there's around the size of that 160 acres, I think. Like 160 acres, we gave to the school north of there. They'll have a high school campus with a, um, uh, a field house, a stadium that's common. And so the road that's going through at section ten is actually a four lane just for the school traffic. It's not really, it doesn't really go anywhere, just to service the school traffic.
Okay. It all is a lot, a lot of change. It's nice when it changes a lot. It really is. Okay. We did have a, a motion and second and a vote to approve and that does pass. Thank you, gentlemen. And, uh, thank you. Appreciate the help on that.
Yes, sir.
And anytime you get a chance to give us updates on builders and such, I appreciate it.
Yes.
And for the good news, this is what I've been.
No, we won't talk about the good news.
No, no worries. Yeah. All right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, sir.
Seven point nine permits inspections, uh, considered to approve the final plan of Santa Fe subdivision section ten.
Yes, sir. And it's the same story as Santa Fe mine day. Uh, LJA will review this if it's in compliance with all county regulations or subdivision development. As you just heard, uh, Mr. Harris say, uh, this section will convey two new schools. Uh, if you go to Santa Fe, take a road now because it's a big development.
It is.
So we'll ask you today to, uh, approve the final plan for Santa Fe section two.
Soon as I get the GPS update, I'll be able to make my way through there pretty good.
There you go.
Relying on Greg to do the driving, screw that. All right. Any discussion? Entertained motion?
The motion will be approved.
Got a motion, Leon, to approve, second from Greg. All of the members say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Your honor, Mr. Housekeeper, Mr. Harter, after the meeting today, we could stay for a few minutes because we have my laws to sign.
Yes.
Thank you.
You bet. Seven point, apparently one more time, consider to approve change in bandwidth and pricing on the Cleveland NX phones. Usually the market bandwidth is less money, probably dollars less money. There's nothing wrong with it.
Okay, last to Mr. Sports approved the upgraded equipment, being on NX, uh, problems that company level three kind of off where they, uh, Matt got ruined, kind of got a backup to clear that. Uh, this is a continuation where now we'll change internet service from that company.
Great.
Yeah, we just want to get a quick roll.
Hundred percent.
So this will be a totally different carrier, which like we said, we're gonna get three times the bandwidth and save about four hundred plus dollars a month, so.
And then I got to turn the funds off.
No, sir. We'll not have to. See, we successfully ordered work with them, so.
Make a motion to approve.
Got it.
Got a motion for Bruce, second, Leon to approve. All of the members say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That one's here. Thank you, gentlemen. Seven point eleven, Mr. God, consider to approve the following, allowing Castle Precinct six to seek a grant from Firehouse Subs, Public Safety Foundation, grant program to purchase radios and accessories. Uh, no match is required by the county. I like that idea. Thank you, Zach, for finding that one. That's, uh, that always makes, uh, Mr. God real happy when there's no match. And this is only asking permission for receipt of this grant. Right. Further, uh, information, Matthew, that we need to include?
No, I don't believe so. This is just authorization to allow him to seek the grant, correct?
Right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see, I don't think you need anything other than that, just, uh, uh, you know, a successful motion.
I'm going to approve.
Got it.
Got a motion for Greg to approve. All of the members say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Seven point twelve, from Mr. Brown, our tax system collector. Consider to approve, uh, one, the redemption of counterfeit bill in amount of a hundred dollars paid late office of one twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-one, and two, the redemption count of counterfeit bill in the amount of twenty dollars paid delivery office of one twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one. Matthew, on these counterfeit bills, can you give us an idea of what transpired from this point?
I really don't know. I've been wondering about that myself. I was hoping Ricky Brown, I think this came up at a time he couldn't be here last time. I've been eagerly waiting the explanation.
So where do you, where do you get the redemption at? That's my question.
I do not know.
Maybe Sheriff can help us on that one. Sheriff, you got any ideas? You got an extra hundred and twenty dollars in your pocket?
Uh, we need Mr. Brown to explain.
Are we taking any kind of preventive, uh, steps to keep this from happening in the future since this has come before the court several times?
You know, at tax time, when people come in and bring an awful lot of cash, it happens. And when the rush is on, especially at the very end of, uh, the time period to pay your taxes, uh, you're probably gonna get this. We've, we've gotten a lot in the past. Kim, you have any ideas what we will do or? Hold the bill up to the light, look at it. I mean, I don't.
There's pens you can mark away.
Yeah, it's, it's tough if they can't trace it back to the end of it.
Yeah.
I think that's a, uh, Mr. Brown question.
Okay. Well, do we want to table this till Mr. Brown's with us or take action?
I'll make the motion. We table.
Okay. Got a motion from Leon to table.
Second.
Second for Bruce. All of the members say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Seven point thirteen from, uh, our county attorney, consider to approve amended Liberty County Sheriff's Office agreement with Harden ISD for the provision of a school resource officer. And, uh, it's pretty much, I wouldn't say always routine, but it is a good, a good thing to have, uh, those guys working with the school districts.
Yes, yes. Uh, so this, uh, I believe, Bobby, correct me if I'm wrong, we had, uh, uh, I believe it had already put this on the agenda last time. We had got some, uh, suggested changes from Hard Knives the after that. And so this is incorporated in some of those changes. I have no problems with them and it suggested, you know, some, some subtle tweaks here and there. Uh, but, um, yeah, other than that, I believe it's ready for approval.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Need a motion? Motion for Greg?
Got it.
Wait, Leon? All of the members say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven point fourteen from, uh, county attorney, select number of staff ambulances and award contract to selected ambulance service provider for the provision of nine-one-one EMS services.
I would ask that you actually do seven point one-six and, and I'm worried you might have a draft. Um, it, it should be, the one you just read should have been seven point one-five, but I'd ask you do seven point one-six uh, before you do seven point one-five, which is to receive and review recommendation of nine-one-one EMS contract evaluation committee and select the ambulance service.
Kind of thought that was backwards. Seven point one five? Oh, we have seven point six.
Yeah, the agenda was receiving a seven point five, so the numbers are, but I don't think we can change it after we posted it. Technically, it's seven point one five, seven point one six.
So more or less the, the, I'd ask that you take the, uh, last agenda item before executive session. That last one, uh, uh, regarding receiving and reviewing the recommendation of the committee before selecting the number of staffed ambulances and boarding the contract.
Okay. So we'll do seven one-four to last. Okay. In that case, move to executive session. Make a motion, you're going to executive session. Got a motion for Bruce, second, Greg. All of the members say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. It is now ten, ten minutes until ten. Nine fifty, we'll move to executive session this time. At ten fifty-two, we'll back out of, uh, executive session to regular session. Matthew, we had some items that we were considering as far as, uh, that how to make one-two, is there anything we need to discuss on that? So, please, it's muted.
And I thought I just found some, uh, some workaround where you can just pull the space bar down. It didn't work. Okay, so, uh, yes, there is no further action that's needed on eight point two. Uh, that was just update the court, uh, and receive the advice of counsel. I anticipate that a, uh, special meeting will be necessary before long when, uh, more substantive matters on that issue will be raised and can be voted on, discussed by the court.
Uh. If don't, uh. Okay. We'll do Spanish today. Uh, in that case, uh, seven one-four was select number of staff ambulances and award contract to selected ambulance service provider for the provision of nine-one-one EMS services. Am I correct?
Well, yes, but I would ask that you take the next one first, the receive and review recommendation of the committee. That way, we, that'll kind of kick off the discussion and discussion because the first question is, um, you know, what are the evaluation committee to say and decide and, uh, to recommend to the court on who should be, uh, awarded the contract?
We want to, Mark Spitz on this one. Let's go ahead and look at, uh, seven one-five, receiving review recommendation for nine-one-one EMS contract violation committee and select ambulance service. Okay? So.
We have the.
Make a, make a motion to accept the recommendation of the committee for allegiance.
Got it.
Yeah, motion for Bruce, second, to accept allegiance as, uh, provider. Ambulance service, all of the members say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries.
Is this part of their submission as part of bidding process or do we have a contract against?
That's subject.
Uh, seven one-four, select number of staff ambulances and award contract to selected ambulance service provider. That one, one, the service. Twenty-five. Okay. Uh, there were several options, if I'm not mistaken. Harold said correct. We need to pick the correct option at this point. Matthew, is that the way you're looking at it?
That's correct. There, um, through the, uh, bidding process, we, we went back. We also asked, uh, both of the bidders to, uh, submit pricing on, uh, various options, uh, you know, that would change the ratio of the number of basic and advanced ambulance services. Um, and also increase the total number of, uh, ambulance services, as well as even provide a chase car. Uh, so after looking at and discussing extensively, the evaluation committee recommends, uh, uh, the, uh, option that provides for advanced, um, uh, units as well as two basic units. Uh, and then, uh, a, an additional chase car, uh, that is staffed by a paramedic. And all of these will be 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And the, the total cost for that was, uh, one million, one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Of course, we are, uh, and I, I would love one of the financial folks speak, uh, uh, on this a little bit more intelligently, but we're several months into the budget year, so while this would be an increase, not all of that increase would be, uh, felt this year.
Yeah, we've already been through, uh, four months of the year, so we'd have to pay for that increase on a monthly basis for the next eight months. I believe I looked at it, it'd be like an extra ninety thousand dollars and, and we could, we could do that to cover it in the budget.
That's a, an extra ninety thousand from the previous contract number, correct?
Right. I believe that's what, uh, we looked at the other day. Uh, it'd be like an extra ninety thousand dollars. So that's something we can do. I mean.
Just to be clear and transparent, there was two proposers and both of them were given the same options.
Okay. Yes. Yeah. Uh, and, uh, so the evaluation committee, I want to add to that, too, looked at this, you know, both from, uh, a question of, of cost, but also, you know, who, uh, who the providers are. Uh, and we looked at a variety of, um, factors involved in that. And so even independent of cost, although cost was a part of it, uh, the evaluation committee, uh, as a total scored allegiance higher. And so even independent of cost, although cost was a part of it, uh, the evaluation committee uh, i- as a total scored allegiance higher. Uh, the uh, other bidder, AMR scored, scored very well as well, but just not quite as well uh, as allegiance.
Well, before the court, our decision is what services we want from allegiance and do we, we want it?
Yes, that is correct.
And that, that exact number is gonna be $95,700 more that we're gonna have to.
Ninety-five thousand, seven hundred?
Right, right, it's 155, 150,000 some odd difference and we've already been through one third of the year, so that leaves two thirds of the year, or the two thirds of the $150,000.
So about $11,962 cents per month increase, correct?
Hold on just a second. At 111. It's gonna be 91,666,000. And it was 79,583, so we're right about $11,000.
But we had budgeted, is it, I want to say it was 87 a month? Originally?
Our original contract was 955,000. Yeah.
That was 79,583 dollars a month. And now it'll be 91,667 dollars a month, but we've already gone through four months, so. Actually, it'll be, you know, so we've got to pick up that, what did I say, $95,000, which I'll be able to find that and cover that and we'll stay in budget.
So, based on Commissioner's Court's uh, decision today, I will then uh, uh, put that into, into the contract, the option that is selected today, and I'll bring it back for a formal and final uh, execution. Uh, hopefully, it would be at the special meeting that we're anticipating uh, will be called over the next week or so.
So this town, there's no vote to take, no action to take till we receive the, the contract?
No, I, I very much uh, asked for a motion from the court selecting which option you want. Whether it's to accept the recommendation or not.
I make a motion in consideration of our committee, of option three, at the 111, ten, nine contract with the four ambulances staff, two regular staff, and one paramedic, one fire today, supervisor chase.
The four plus two plus one plan.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, got a motion for Bruce, second Leon, to approve the awarding as noted. All of the members say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, leave that taste care of business for today. I make a motion to adjourn. Motion for uh, thank Leon to adjourn, all of the members say aye. Likewise.